Okay, thanks everybody. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks again for coming out. We'll start with item number one. McCoy called me. He's gonna be just a couple minutes later. We'll start with item number one, approve the agenda, the additions, additions or corrections. Do you have anything else besides what you have on here?
No.
Dan, anything?
No.
Addition, additions, anything? Doug?
I think we wanted to order the Historical Society to...
Under whole business. F2. Okay. And then we've got an addition under J3 in the Engineers' Report. We're gonna get an update on the construction progress third quarter and fifth. And we're gonna have a pay request for SO contracting for 2017 Street Project for $592,773.95. We'll add that to J3. And Brad will give us a update on that.
Yep.
I believe that was it. Anything else? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll make that motion. McCoy, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Onto number two, the consent agenda.
I wanna pull under E, number three.
So move to E3.
Yep.
And we'll just put that down under new business. G2. That's G2. Okay, anything else?
I just, one question on E. Why, why do they seem like it's all at once from July, August, September?
No, because some of them didn't get to me until I started asking for them.
Okay. I was just wondering why. She seemed like a whole lot all of a sudden at once.
Yeah.
That was all I was wondering.
Yeah.
I have, I have one other question too. On the minutes for the city council at least. I know quite some time ago, we talked about this and we made a motion. And on the top of these, there would, to see full detail or something like that. Reversed to the film or the... It used to be on there. It was on there until April. It hadn't been on since. There was controversy on different ways it had been written up and tell people that they can see the full thing on the video.
Thanks, Doug. Anything else? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. You have a second? So, McCoy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, onto B, visitors to the council for presentation for police reserves. Chief Burgess.
Yeah, I did not so. Um, earlier this summer, our investigator, Jesse Redding, who is also our reserve coordinator, he adds up everything. But he came to me and he said, you know, we should probably recognize a couple of our reserves who have put in a lot of time with us and a lot of service for us. Said, hey, that's a good idea. Let's get it done. So Jesse took to getting them some plaques made. And we're gonna present them today to Scott Larson and Richard Hannenberg. For 20 years on the reserve program, helping us out in the city. So, great job. Come on up.
Scott Larson? Richard?
Congratulations to the two of you. Thank you for all your help throughout the years. You've done a lot.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Picture. She's like a, besides her partner.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Good job, guys. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Here?
Yeah. Come back here, Richard.
Coming up here.
Who wants to be blocked?
Good, you good?
Bring him with him Monday.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Get it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, on the public forum, I don't have any cards. Okay, committee report, number one, EDA. You have something on that for the roadside?
Yes, so Stephanie, um, did she talk to the EDA about this specifically? So part of the, what came out of the comp plan was improving wayfinding and signage. And so this doesn't include a sign at this time. It could in the future. But it is setting up kind of that gateway into Casson at the intersection of 14 and 57. So when people are coming from the east and exiting, that Minda would potentially participate in playing for the planting to create a buffer there that would kind of hide some of those vehicles that are just sitting up on the hill opposite the exit. We would need to provide the labor to put the plants in, but we'll be asking Minda to pay for those plantings. Yep.
Basically, Casson property, sale of, come around that or something that would...
Be the worst.
Yep.
Just there, and there's a grant opportunity Stephanie found that's available for that. So if we could apply for it, see if we get it.
Yep, exactly.
If we get it, then we can put something there.
Right, exactly.
So it'd be actually be in Minda right away?
Exactly, yep, yep.
Any other questions for Teresa?
Will that, if it does go in, will that fall into their jurisdiction for maintenance on it then?
Um, we would maintain the actual planting bed. They would still mow their ditch and mow their other mowable areas. But we're also looking at what kind of mulch can we put in to keep weeds from growing in and that kind of thing.
So if we plant a tree, then we'll, we'll have to trim the tree or... Right.
Right. But it doesn't mean we have to take over...
Oh, right.
Yeah, we don't have to take over mowing the ditch and all that.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the application of the grant.
I'll make that.
Thanks, Doug. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously, Linda. Number two, the CETA contract.
It's a pre-annual, the annual contract that we have with CETA to provide us with our EDA coordinator. The evaluations that I have seen for Stephanie have been positive. And I don't know if Chris and Dan want to speak specifically to the, to the contract, but I think it's been working well for us.
I think it's working better now.
Yeah.
It's not slight on the previous person assigned here. But Stephanie's, I think, doing a fantastic job. She's found some pots of money for us here recently that we did no route there. So I'd definitely say she's paying for herself what, just the grants that we have the opportunities for. So I think it's working really well and she's really, yeah, I think she's really, uh, she's representing us well when she's out talking to people. And she's got the website. It's updated now. We have property listings on there for any property in Casson. If you own commercial property to sell or to rent, we can do a listing on there. She's doing some good stuff from the city. Good recommendation on that.
She's really thorough and it helps that she's also worked with Dodge County EDA. So she's got a good outline of the whole area. She really brings a lot to it. She's found out different things that we've gotta change.
So any specific questions? This is in our proposed budget, so.
I just see bucks being brought up there. Have we been getting a bang for the buck there at all or?
That's, that's it.
Oh, it's done.
That's done.
Yeah, that's done. I can make that, I can remove that from the line.
I just mentioned in there, I haven't heard nothing about it for a while.
We use the Buck's information in your comprehensive plan, for comprehensive planning, but then we terminated our agreement with them.
And the information was used in some of the grant applications.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions? Hope not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. You have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Old Business, F1, health insurance clarification.
The highlighted parts, I started reading the fine print on here. And I, it was a, it was a... I didn't know this, so I thought, well, if I didn't know it, you guys probably didn't know it, that the insurance is a two-year term. So we have to participate with the Public Employees Insurance Program for two years. That's what the, the contract and going with them entitles. And if we didn't, there is a penalty and we can't rejoin for another two years after that. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that it is a two-year commitment to them. But we did look back at 10 years of premiums or increases. And what was it? Never more than 4%. Usually it was zero to two, three. But I just wanna make sure you guys know it's a two-year commitment.
No, it makes sense.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. What risk is there with two years? The risk is the second year, the premium could go up 20 or 30%. It was gonna go up 30% for us this year and we knocked hundreds of thousands off if I go on this. So to me, when I, my packet, yeah, you never like to have a two-year term if you don't have to, but what's our risk? We were already gonna be 30% higher than where we are today if we didn't go with this, so.
There is nothing in stone what they could raise it next year, you mean with their...
There is nothing in stone. And there was nothing in stone ever before either. It all depended on our, our rating. And we were not rating very well.
If the premiums increase more than 50%, you can, there's...
Yeah, that, that's a big increase. So if they went up more than 50%, they let us out, you know?
Their attorney did a good job writing that for them.
So I just thought you should know and you should approve that.
Okay, thank you.
It is a two-year contract.
Any other questions on that?
Well, I mean, all you can do is look back and look back at the two, three years.
Well, in your first year with a new insurance company, they're really taking a risk on you anyway because they don't know, I mean, they go back in your usage, but they don't know what's gonna happen this year to any of the employees either.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve that plan with a two-year commitment.
So I'll make that.
Thank you. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Number two, this is that full application.
Right, so we had already been approved to a sign. This is actually our, like, pre-application to find out if we ranked high enough to go forward with a full application. So this was already approved for signature when Karen and Buffy came to visit with us. These are the final numbers after they took into account all that we had available, the number of units that were eligible, so we have, and their cost to administer this. So it comes to $888,000.
And we don't have a motion on this. We already...
No, no.
An update.
Why not just be final, final, well, you see the application number.
Perfect.
The application.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll move on. Thanks, Teresa. Onto new business, number one, campus 2018 municipal election results.
No, we added...
We added the...
We added three there, under whole business.
Oh, under whole business, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot to write that to you. Okay.
I'll start with, I guess what I wanna say, was brought to my attention that I don't think I was quite up to speed on the last meeting of all the changes that were done. I assumed that the Historical Society Board was involved with these changes, whatever else, and from understand the plaque is not kind of underneath guidelines of what else is throughout the county, the same style of plaque and everything else. Can you bring me up to speed somebody on this thing to find out exactly what this is?
From the last meeting, Don was here. We agreed to do some changing to increase the size of the lettering so it could be read from the roadway. To increase the size of the lettering, we had to cut the number of letters down in the sign to make it all fit. We included more information on the backside of it, so it actually has more information than it did before. And Don approved that and the city council approved it and we moved forward.
I wanna know about the sign.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, the sign.
What's the color?
The color? I think it was blue and white.
Uh, blue and aluminum.
And it was in the last discussion.
Which doesn't match any of the other historical markers throughout the county.
But this is a city historical marker. City Casson, blue and white, blue and silver.
City Casson, the green city shop. I don't think color would matter. It would be more, it would be contiguous throughout the county for a historical marker. When I say that, I didn't get to see these changes. I guess I assumed, I mean, Don, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I'm gonna say I don't under, I don't, I've been on the board. I don't believe that Don has the right to go and approve changes without the board's knowledge. But this is, I guess I don't see that this was discussed appropriately between both sides.
But this is city property. This isn't a county historical site. This is city property. Is that true?
Yeah, but it's not the KM school banner sign out there either.
No, but pretty much the city throughout, the city water tower, the city, anything with the signs is blue and white, pretty much. Is the city welcome sign out here blue?
No, because Casson is in blue.
Yes.
Brand blue.
I, I didn't see an issue with that.
Well, the way I look at it is that you guys made changes in the historical board, didn't get to see those changes.
Actually, Don asked for changes after it was approved and we agreed to make those changes to fit what Don wanted. And he's with the Historical Society, correct?
Yes.
Do you want me to address this, the issue?
Yes, if you would, Don.
Well, when this was discussed the last time...
Don, you step up, you'll just take your name and...
Hi.
Thank you.
Well, Westfall Executive Director of the Dodge County Historical Society, I live in Casson. Uh, what I wanted to get at here is that the last time I was here, I was under the false assumption that you had all seen the text that the Dodge County Historical Society approved for this sign. Now subsequently, it's come to my attention and the rest of the board, but that may not have been the case. And that you may not have had a chance to really study that text versus the one that was presented at the last meeting. And so that's why we wanted to revisit this so that we could actually compare these two texts side by side. And actually have to give you a chance to see what DCHS had intended for you to vote on. I, my assumption was that because that one wasn't present, that you had decided to reject that and just go with this other text. And so seeing the course of action, I just decided to go with that myself. But I think under the circumstances, it would be good to go back, revisit this whole issue and make sure that you had a chance to really study DCHS proposal for the text in addition to the one that was developed within the city administration. So I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Yeah, I haven't seen a change.
Wasn't that included in our last packet, the text? You just handed out a sign. We saw those and we heard what the other... That was all in our last meeting when we approved.
Don handed us some pictures of some historical markers that are developed county. I got the last meetings in front of me. I, I don't see anything. I tried to find it earlier today of the new proposed sign. So, I mean...
Now, we did email the version of the text that had been approved by the Dodge County Historical Society Board of Directors. But as I think I may have, subsequently, we've come to learn that some of you, all of you, may not really have seen it. Or maybe you did, 'cause Dan's referring to something that might have been in your packet.
He's referring to what you handed out to me last...
Oh, you mean the pictures, just pictures of other similar signage throughout the county, okay. So what we're really talking about right now, this is the text for the sign. And we can get into other issues about the design of it and the color of it and things like that. But we really mainly wanna revisit this issue in text itself first.
Yeah, we, we all didn't see it, 'cause we have the Water Tower Committee that reviewed it and that's who brought back the recognition.
Now, we were part of that Water Tower Committee originally, that we didn't actually get consulted about this change to the text until I showed up the last meeting and it was handed to me. But as I said, my impression then was that it was a done deal and that you had already seen both versions and just decided that you preferred this newer version. And so it seems as though we had no recourse at that point.
Yeah, no. We didn't see that.
Okay. All right, well, that explains that much at least. Now, as I say, there's some of these other issues concerning the color, which you alluded to, the aluminum versus the black and gold. That is something that could be considered separately from the text itself. And I think both sides really agreed on this revised Ohio-style sign from CUOS Studios because that was what the city administrator was also utilizing.
The big issue is with the text, not necessarily the sign or the color of the sign.
Well, the color is something that could be considered separately maybe as a topic. But the main issue right now really is more the text. Now, we've got a, that version of the text, if all of you wanna take a look at it currently.
Well, we fire up the committee to get together then. I'd like to see the text and like, bring, like, be brought back next meeting. Like the text and I'd like to see if some, what is actually got some historic value to it.
Well, this text has been vetted over a long period of time by the Dodge County Historical Society utilizing the models of the National Park Service and Minnesota Historical Society. So that's why we thought it deserved another hearing if it never really got a chance to be seen and studied by the members of the city council.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see both versions, I guess. And like, there's gonna be another meeting. I don't know what it is. But I would like to sit in the background. If I won't say anything, but I'd like to sit in the background.
I would just like to see a solution so we don't have to have this on our agenda after the next meeting ever again. Um, it's a really big waste of time of our city resources and your resources. I mean, so if the Water Tower Committee can get together with the historic, come back with a recommendation of the council that can just be a recommendation and be done.
I'm fine.
We spend way too much time, um, anyway, not only with that. So if our group, Water Tower Committee, gets with the Historic Society, meets together, gets something. That way, everybody comes in with the recommendation that both sides say, hey, this is what we recommend. We take it up to action and we're done.
I'm good with that.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
You guys good with that?
I guess we will.
You good in the next two weeks?
I should ask our treasurer here. She's representing the organization.
She could, yes, Linda.
I would like to explain at some point to the council how we came up with the text we did.
I believe you. You guys are professionals that... You can do that next meeting. You're very professional in historical stuff. You know your stuff. I believe you 100% of that. So if you guys can all get together, communicate clearly and together and bring back one recommendation that everybody agrees on. I would love that.
So you wanna see really one consensus text as opposed to two versions?
Yeah, yeah. So otherwise, if one side comes back next time and says, we like this, and everybody like this, now we're making, I, I can't make that decision. I'm not a historical person at all.
I understand.
I'm only 49 years old. That's all the history I have. And you guys can all get together on that and determine what you want together so that I can say, sounds good, 'cause both sides like it, I'll vote for that.
Well, that's the way you should work. You should get completed staff work.
And I shouldn't, yeah. I'm not gonna make the decision on what text should be, so.
All right, sounds good.
Sounds good. I'll go out myself. Thank you very much.
Onto G, new business, canvas for 2018 municipal election results.
All the canvassing in material was in your package. Uh, it had the number of persons registered at 7:00 AM, the number that registered on election day, the number of accepted military, regular overseas ballot, total number of persons voting, and then it's got all of the numbers by precinct, by person, by person by precinct. So I can answer any questions that you have on it. Otherwise, I just have a form to sign and I send this to the county when I go on Friday for the county canvassing.
Any questions for Linda? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the results of the 2018 municipal election.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, McCoy. You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same side. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Linda. Appreciate it. Uh, G2, that was Doug. You had moved the minutes on the consent agenda, item E, number three.
Yeah. Uh, I've brought this up before. I just agree on how it was written. And there are several people here who were at the meeting. Anyway, I was attending the meeting and I was, uh, Tom Ferris asked something about... I forget how it all started. They were talking a little bit about if you were to recuse yourself from something. And what the facts were and everything. And I was sitting in the back row and all of a sudden Tom asked me if I went through this process. Ahead of it was a sub motor truck and this and that. And, uh, well, it was about a three-part question and I did say, you know, would I answer them if you answered one at a time? No, yeah, no, but beside the point. I never said that I recused myself from anything there. And it's written there that I did. This had been two years before that. I'm a subcontractor for someone that subcontracted, blacked out on that job. There was no reason for me to be recusing myself there. It stated that. I tried to go that over that with Linda and she left it in there like that. And I've, I've watched it over and over and I don't have myself saying that at all, so.
So the last line there where it says Mr. Buck stated that he did and is a second, do you want that changed that did not?
Yeah.
The Planning Commission approved these minutes.
Okay.
And in, at the October meeting when Councilman Buck was there and stated the same thing to the Planning Commission, they had approved the minutes, but he said he wanted it on the record. So you haven't seen it yet because those are in the October minutes that have not been approved by the Planning Commission yet. But it does state in there in the October one that Mr. Buck wanted it on the record that he did. So those minutes you just haven't seen yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't seen them either, so I just...
Well, no, we haven't approved them at Planning Commission, so.
I wasn't gonna approve them here either. That isn't the way it came down. But something about all the dirt, well, no, I have no dirt. But I have a truck there. Yeah, there's a truck there. And so that's what I mean. There's about three different things in there real quick. I get it on the, on the tape. You pretty much hear me say, yeah, to the question. But there was more. And I'm sitting over there. I didn't pick up very good, you know, so it isn't what I meant.
Like a three-part question. I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. So like I say, if I had to answer them, I would've said, no, gap, no, but, so.
So we'll get that corrected with the next set of minutes that we get.
Okay.
Well, it'll be on, in the Planning Commission October minutes that they did, that they approved it. But Mr. Buck stated and wanted it on the record. So that is in the October Planning Commission minutes.
Okay.
Good, Doug?
No, there was one other... No, there was one other part in here too. It was on the part when, uh, they're going over a bunch of stuff with revocation of conditional improvement for Jason Walker. And, uh, it says there that this Matt Boyd, uh, laws of law and applies to everyone, he does not believe the commission. Well, I didn't take it that way at all. He, he was talking to one person at that time. He stood up there and said he served in Iraq, a couple of things and does an investigation, he can read people, and he pointed to one person and said that he wasn't telling the truth and that he was lying. And I just wanted to bring that to light with Mr. Zulinski.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Administrator's report?
Um, so, it's that time again when the league in Minnesota cities offers the, actually it's new and experienced officials conference. So I have reached out to the two incoming council members to find out from them if they'd like to attend, and I'm working with them on that. And I also wanted to ask if the experienced officials wanted to attend that conference again, February first and second, in Plymouth.
What's the deadline set? I'm trying to get my calendar.
I don't think there's a deadline. I, you could pretty much show up and, I'll see what charges for it.
I'd be interested.
For the first and second.